Let's call the meeting to order. We'll start with roll call.
We're married.
Here.
The show.
Here. Here.
There you go.
Here.
Where's Jim Wees?
Here.
All right, we've got a request here for actually one of our colleagues. Oh, you want to read the public notice?
Yes. Please state notice. An application has been made by Edward and Jess. Twenty four fifty five. This is to operate an agricultural oriented business in an agricultural district. Jefferson Township on following premises to it. Pete Southwest Porter Northwest Porter Section fifteen County one oh one. Houston County Minnesota. Said applicant standing and making application is as the owner said described. During this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioners Room, City of Caladonia, Minnesota at five P M on Thursday, July twenty eighth. All persons having interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to submit comments relative to the granting or denying said application. Comments should be mailed to the Environment Services Department, Bureau for South Marshall Street, Caladonia, Minnesota, or email to martin dot earth at C O dot Houston dot M N dot U S. It must be received by Tuesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty two. Comments in regard to the issue received by this date will be part of the public record and will be made available to the city by the planning commission prior to the meeting. Houston Planning Commission.
Thank you. Do we want to, you want to come up with a staff report? Give us a oversight of what's going on.
Yes. Requested. Commissioner is requesting a conditional use permit for an agricultural oriented business in agricultural district. That's a district. The applicant is looking to run welding and fabricating shop. They will tear and fabricate agricultural equipment. Miscellaneous welding and sign cut. Business will take place out of a building that is in the process of being constructed. In March of twenty twenty one, the Board of Adjustments granted a variance of thirty six feet to allow placement of accessory building thirty three feet. Center on Bluebird Road in variance of twenty feet to allow placement of accessory building eighty feet from county, state aid highway fourteen. On receipt, the variances permit number fifty twenty nine is issued on four fifteen twenty twenty one for the shop. Minnesota D O T identified two hundred and ten trips per day on Bluebird Road. It doesn't appear that it has a lot of traffic. You're basically at the end of the promised. This is close to the end there, is that right?
Highway fourteen, so two miles from our case.
Um, so what else? There were there were two options in business business. One is efficient use permit. The other would be an area of occupation. Somebody up there wanted to do this so he could continue. Future generations, which is condition use permit will allow you to do it. There may be some stories we're putting outside such as like skid steer catch. Some of the things that are just too heavy to prove. The applicable ordinance is fourteen three condition uses. Subdivision non condition uses in the district. Only after a key condition use permit. The agriculture business is included but not limited to commercial storage, blending liquid and dry fertilizers, bringing in sales and general repair and installation services for agricultural. No, no comments were received. So it's one acre in size, it's part of the two hundred and ninety acres. The existing road was built in nineteen eighty three. Multiple public roads divide the acreage. Remaining construction of the proposed book is already again, rough standards of net, so those are not relevant to the proposal. There's no flood plain issues, no wetland issues. There is an intermittent stream directly over the site. So it's basically just one employee basically.
Yeah.
That's basically the extent of.
If you'd like to add anything to that yet?
That actually describes it pretty well, but I've been like all the way farm shop in there for all my life, basically, but this is a little different because I went to farm, you know? Simon's taken by the farm, own farm. It's just right by the road, so it's pretty visible and it's, it's basically going to be a business.
Keep you out of mischief, huh?
That's, that's what it is.
So you'll be pretty much exclusively welding and not a lot of milling or any kind of fabrication work or that type of thing?
Mostly welding. It makes skid steer catch and sometimes generally fair trade.
Access will be directly off of the Uber direct to the shed.
Right off.
Okay. You're gonna have enough room in front of the building for parking or it looks pretty tight?
I also park up a lot of Uber, I have a few there. It's, it's kind of in front, I can't park too much there, I can park some along side that.
I'm assuming it drops off rather quickly behind the building, that's why you kept it still close, okay?
Anybody else in the planning commission have questions, comments, observations? Your wife approved of this? Comments from the general public? You have neighbors here want to roll some? Additional planning commission members? Member to discuss it, I think you did that already. And we're really moved findings. Did they also have any comments or questions?
Are you going to print signs on that or?
I thought the sign won't be white, but something.
Yeah, yeah, I was just yes, yes, sorry.
Sure.
Planning Commission shall not recommend a conditional use permit after a time of those using forms to that analysis. It prioritizes agriculture and supporting industries. In addition, issues being proposed on inside environment sensitive areas and off.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign?
I don't inject here, let's move to, I'll move to strike number five, number nine, and number thirteen, as they are not applicable.
Except that.
All in favor say aye. Oppose same sign? Motion passes. Five, nine, thirteen. Or do? Yes.
That the applicant demonstrates a need for proposed use staff analysis. The applicant identifies there is a continuous need for repair of equipment in parking operations.
Any questions on that? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion passes.
Three, that the proposal does not degrade the water quality of the staff analysis, this proposal will not include the addition of any structures. It simply consists of allowing the business at a consistent site. There will be no wastewater of the leak being generated.
Any questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water. Staff analysis, this proposal will not include any activity or structures as the shed has already been.
Any questions on that? All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Number six, that the potential pollution hazard have been addressed and that standards have been analysis. There will be no wastewater generated from shop building and welding generally does not generate.
Any questions on that?
Edward, you paint a lot of stuff or? And?
I probably don't have, you know, paint. Should dissipate. To do a lot of brush me.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Proceeding with adequate utilities accessible and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Staff analysis, all necessary utilities are currently present at the site. The range from the building will be addressed during the variance process. Any new utility requirement will be the responsibility of the area.
Any questions on that? All in favor, specifically say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Number eight, the adequate measures have been and will be taken to provide sufficient oxygen, parking, loading space to serve the proposed use. Staff analysis, the applicant feels that the parking area in front of the shop will be adequate to be
Any questions on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion pass.
Ten, that the conditional use will not be injurious, injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for purposes already permitted. Staff analysis, surrounding properties are primary residential or agricultural in nature. Issues will largely mimic activities that place on an active front of operation.
Any questions on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Number eleven, that the establishing a conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development, improvement of surrounding vacant property for the predominant uses in the area. Staff analysis, surrounding property available for development is primary agricultural. And this business proposal will not impede, impede orderly development for agricultural or residential uses.
Any questions or comments on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Number twelve, that adequate measures have been and will be taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noises, vibration. So that none of these will constitute nuisance and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to the neighboring properties will result. Staff analysis, besides family, two closest dwellings are over a quarter mile away. Welding generates noise and fumes, it will be limited to the immediate vicinity of the building. No lighted signs are proposed.
Questions or comments on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Number fourteen, that the intensity of the proposed commercial or industrial development is not greater than the intensity of the surrounding uses and not greater than the intensity characteristic of the applicable zone. Staff analysis, this proposal is for a commercial operation to take place within an existing structure. The location is amongst family farms which one blocks the applicant. This activity will likely not be more intense than the surrounding.
Questions or comments on that?
On the staff analysis, it states this proposal is for a commercial operation, I would change commercial operation to ag oriented business. I think it's more fitting.
Change, change your budget?
Yes.
Does that make sense? That says it's in the staff analysis, it states commercial operation, I would change that to ag oriented business.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries with the correction.
Number fifteen, that sites, such other conditions are established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Staff analysis, there is no anticipated effect on the public's health, safety, morals, and general.
Questions or comments on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Where we at?
I'll recommend approval of the findings.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. There any other further discussion on the motion? Any other observations or comments?
I think that if Houston County is going to encourage maybe not encourage, but at least help ag businesses get started. At least not putting a lot of lux in the middle there, and this seems like something that'd be good for the ag community, especially most of the ag community, so.
Any other comments? All right, what do we got to do? Have, we got to have the recommendations first, huh? Condition.
Yeah.
Yeah, conditions. We have one here at least. Yep, do you want to read them?
The planning commission must consider should the permit be granted, staff recommend the following conditions. The permit shall comply with all federal, state, and local laws. Second condition, the county may enter onto the present premises at reasonable times in any reasonable manner to ensure the permit holder is in compliance with the conditions and all other applicable statute rules or ordinances.
I'll make a motion to recommend the dual of the conditional use permit for an agriculture oriented business in an agricultural section district.
With the two conditions?
Two conditions.
Any more comments?
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the conditional use request. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose same sign?
Motion pass. Was jerky heading under oath there? We could have asked him a couple of other questions. Take it over.
Okay. What says here five twenties the next hearing, invite her up to go two minutes ahead of time?
Right here.
Want to read the public?
Yes.
Notice of public hearing, please state notice that an application has been made by Karen Lawson, five. Lowered in the Minnesota for conditional use permit because cabin. Section thirty one, township one two eight seven Houston County. So said applicant standing and making application. During this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioners Room, City of Caladonia, Minnesota, by five P M on Thursday, July twenty eighth. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to submit comments relative to the granting or denying said application. Comments should be mailed to the Environment Services Department, Bureau for South Marshall Street, Caladonia, Minnesota, or email to martin dot earth at C O dot Houston dot M N dot U S. It must be received by Tuesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty two. Comments in regard to the petition received by this date will be part of the public record and will be made available to the city by the planning commission prior to the meeting.
Do you want to just explain the project, what you have in mind?
I'm not Karen, I'm not someone I have this Karen inherited from her dad. The way that's just a little Karen.
You want to identify yourself, please?
Oh, John Lawson.
Okay.
This is Karen Lawson.
Thank you.
And we want to put a little, I don't know, that's last in here. Thirteen years she's over on her dad. It's like fourteen by twenty five.
This will be on post or something or how you?
Skids.
Skids.
It comes on skids.
Okay.
It's being made with Utica.
Not the honest you're making it?
Yeah, but they'll haul it from Utica. It's on four. Putting it on some inch and a half inch rock with payers.
Sure.
It's the rock.
Any questions? Of applicants from the members here?
So the rest of the person is, is wrecked now?
Yes. To Kevin Nelson.
Okay. No comments came in from any neighbors or anybody?
Yes.
Or later in their end up.
Okay, so I guess at this point, we, we kind of know what, what you need to tell us here that, what you have in mind, so if you wanted to let the other people come forward? Even anybody that has a comment that I'd be wanting to?
Say what you want.
Just come, come forward though when you.
Everly Borean. One third owner of the farm that, that is next to their farm. I just have concerns on that. I really want natural habitat. I want to preserve that area. And I want to respect them, I want them to respect us, I mean, I don't mean want to make sure that they are set back far enough from the boundary line. And I'm not real positive where the boundary lines. So I think the fish to survey.
So they, they border right next to you?
Yes.
It's anger fault for land. There was old cabin site on the map, so woods that is not a block.
Yourself?
What's that?
Identify.
Sorry, Johnny McHale. She's my mother-in-law, so we can sit next to each other.
So you're talking about the same parcel, you're both representing the same parcel.
We're family partners in it. And we have a, that parcel that we own next to them is in a conservation, isn't it? It's called Rim, which is redeveloped in Minnesota, so it protects the watershed from the belch. So we got a letter that cabins going up close to that edge. That just raised concerns because we'd like to see land stays not get so fragmented and see so many cabins popping up across the I'm, I'm a private lands forester, so I do a lot of landscape work for private land, and I've seen these cabins. And, and these, we don't look care at her husband. And they can be great people, but we're also concerned the next ownership coming in may see that a cabin is not too for Airbnb and I mean, that's once you, once granted permit, it just can't take it back, so it's makes so just concerned, you know, with being that close to property line still, so.
I do.
Describe it, see some of the Farm Service Agency maps we had, had our boundary on up the field edge. And we had to clarify with, I mean, we need to help this get longer. Is correct according to the insight for the most part, so that helped clarify, so maybe that's a concern. We're property line wasn't exactly, so. We got.
How close to the property line are they anticipating putting this?
Pretty close to a hundred from me. I was out there today, I stepped off a hundred, it could be seven. And they marked it, they said seven.
Okay, there must be some indication of the property line.
Oh, that's okay.
Okay.
A very, very old. You can see the wire coming out the hill, the wire coming down the hill, and then it comes this way toward it, and it's very clear.
Does the cabin have a setback?
Apart.
It's the same as the welding or any other structure, it's going to be deep from the property line.
Yeah. Okay.
I was up there to verify, I was worried about the top of the bluff step back. I would probably address upon our live R data. Where I'm doing top of the bluff actually matches very closely to the property line in that particular area, and they were well over the forty foot setback.
Right now, is, is everybody satisfied where the property lights are?
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's like, like you said, it's, it's old fence and stuff, and it's, it's hard to have a official survey, but, you know, we're just, you know, if it's ten feet one or the other, really, that's not going to it take whether the structural is up or not.
Okay, because a lot of times fences are a good indicator, but it depends on when the cows got out and what's close to fix the fence so it could get moved. God, this tree is pretty close, so let's but everybody's good at the setbacks as far as.
I see, so he said it's more like seventy feet from the fence line.
Okay.
Is there a road between the two properties? No, it's pretty rugged bluff tree, so that's, that's why we just wanted to protect the bluff.
Well, one good thing, we're not going to disturb a lot of dirt either with cabin company. So. So you're reaching minimum.
Yeah.
The question would be, what, what's the access to get into the cabin? The road going in there, what, what kind of topography does that go over?
It's just over our field, it's just going to be a field.
Is it, is it pretty flat, I mean, or?
Yes.
That would be if you're climbing hills on a road, that can be pretty horrible.
It's just really the only flat part.
Okay, so you're kind of going across the peak of ridge top.
It'll be right next to Kevin Nelson's property.
Okay.
If he rests the land.
So your driver comes down onto a township road.
I think drive.
All far from the access point to, will it be to the cabin? You can do that?
A block.
Okay.
One of your concerns is that this could end up being Airbnb.
Well, I don't know what the rules are applied to this, but I see a lot of cabins to rent it out. Pools come in for a weekend and want to enjoy the scenery of Houston County. It's great for that owner, but it's the neighbors that have issues with a lot of stuff, and I, I, I don't know, they're doing that, and I, I'm not but I, this, you know, ten years down the road, what happens with the next one, two to twenty years?
There is no water, no, correct? There is water, no water, no sewer, so it shouldn't be.
No electricity?
No electricity.
Well, I'm just saying, here's your that, you know, we've seen quite a few cabins. And usually the question is asked, are you going to rent it out? And it could be a condition that it's for the family only, because I could see without a condition like that, that it would be easy to say so and so wants to come down here, they can, and it's sitting empty right now because we're not there, so we'll, we'll rent it out, and so I could actually see that being an issue.
And our concern, we have the Charles Street that goes at the base of the bluff below them, and it's, it's trespassing, it's an issue for us, not from them, but from other neighbors. And we have people that are visiting, that's, you know, we're both absentee owners, so we're not out there policing the property. We don't want to be those people, we want to have good neighbors and enjoy each other, and that's, that's just makes a stronger community. And we have issues. And we have issues with neighbors that. Leads to more headaches and enjoyment. These are just some work concerns. I mean, it's.
Would you be comfortable if there was a condition like that put in there? Would that make make things a little easier through your?
Just give it to family.
I should be asking, how many kids?
What's the definition of that?
Family means like my brothers and sisters.
Yeah.
That would be, yeah, we could never rent a thing.
I guess it would say something like private use only or something not defined family.
Or not, or just.
This is this proposal is not for an Airbnb or anything that would require a different permit. So this isn't a way. A lot of use.
My husband and I have been thrown off our own land by somebody who's walking out saying, I have permission from the landlord to fish down here. Well, you know.
That's the draw of the Charles stream. You get a lot of lots of people there.
So we're very protective.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Same thought.
So is everybody on the some kind of time to open some language in here like that?
Yeah.
Are you okay with that, too? Just for private use only kind of? Yeah. No. If we put it in there, it won't change anything in the plans that you have. It doesn't sound like any.
What stop people from trespassing of the drought stream? But it'll at least help somewhat.
Well, maybe people will trespass if they're out there in the cabin.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah. I don't think they come down that.
Yeah.
So if you if you're comfortable with that?
Yeah. It's it's something I know it's this is more of a formality for cabin or cabin. But it's it's concerns I have. It just doesn't exist. It's it's not saying they're doing it, but it's. I just I just like to protect a bunch of land and land's natural areas as we can. Who are fragmenting our landscapes so fast. Cold, it seemed to exacerbate. Everybody wants to get out and enjoy the outdoors. And that's great. But we can all camp on RV in every corner. That's that's a some of the concerns. I appreciate you hearing our voice.
No, those are legitimate concerns.
Yeah. It's best way to protect yourself coming now rather than later.
Have you considered posting the land? Or maybe you've done that already?
Yeah, it's it's posted. Those laws with trespass issues challenge.
A lot of people can read that.
Yeah, we go for signature rates. They could. They tear a film. It's not. Those are other issues.
Good information on things.
We want discussion before we go to findings.
I think we got to get out findings. Nine, four, thirteen, and fourteen there.
I'll make a motion. Second it.
Now, all of the people taking those out of the findings, say hi. Are we ready to go to findings then?
Number one, findings subdivision one, the planning commission shall not recommend a conditional use permit on our state farm. One, if the proposed use informs the county land use claim, staff analysis, comprehensive plan references, limiting development in a local area. This proposal has limited impact.
I was agree with the analysis on number one. Say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
The chief, the applicant demonstrates a need for the proposed use. Staff analysis, the applicant indicates that the cabin is intended for recreational use. Since this parcel is primary to primarily till. The applicants do not utilize it much and would like to spend more time with. This demonstrates a need for the proposed use to the extent possible.
So agree with the analysis on number two. Say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Three, the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county staff analysis. Any effects on water quality resulting from the placement of a cabin are anticipated to be negligible. There is no wastewater system requirements for cabins, but the applicants identified they will use a porta potty. This is not, this this will be need need to be brought by a license.
All those that agree with the analysis on number three, say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? There's.
Number four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water. Staff analysis, cabin footprint is minimal and is not anticipated to have an effect on quantity of water.
All those that agree with the analysis, number four, say hi. Any opposed?
Number five, that soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the proposed use. Staff analysis, the soil survey indicates that soils at both sites can accommodate buildings, but should conform to the natural slope.
All those that agree with the analysis on number five, say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Number six, that the that pollution, that potential pollution hazards have been addressed and that standards have been met. Staff analysis, there are no anticipated pollution hazards.
All those that agree with the analysis of number six, say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
That adequate utilities, access roads, drainage and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Staff analysis, no utilities are proposed accesses from the township road, which there is an existing field access.
All those that agree with the analysis of number seven, say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Number ten, that the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Staff analysis, the parcel was located at the end of Kaisak Drive. There is one rural residential dwelling within a half mile and one farm state built that hit Bluff's campground is within a mile of the end of the proposed location. The addition of the cabin will increase the use of Kaisak Drive, but is not anticipated to negatively affect the use of neighboring properties.
All those that agree with analysis of number ten, say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Number eleven, that the establishment of a conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for the predominant uses in the area. Staff analysis, the predominant land use is agricultural and forest continuation, which will not be impacted by a cabin. Much of the property north of Ricewood Creek is total acreage with small amounts of woodland. Then there is a great deal of bluff and conservation program land to the south and east in proximity to Ricewood Creek. Zoning office does not know of any. It is not proposed in this area and the cabin should not impact neighboring landowners' ability to use their property for existing uses.
All those that are due to staff analysis of number eleven, say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Number fifteen, that site specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals and general welfare. Staff analysis, public health, safety, morals and general welfare are not anticipated to be.
All those that agree with the staff analysis of number fifteen, say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? And do you want to? Let's see. Go through the recommendations for the missions now.
Sure.
I'll recommend approval of the findings. Is there a second to that? All those in favor of approving the findings, say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Can we go through the conditions?
The planning commission must consider the criteria of, should the permit be granted? Staff recommend requiring the following conditions. Number one, the committee, permittee shall comply with all federal, state and local laws and regulations. Number two, the county may enter onto the premises at reasonable times and in a reasonable manner to ensure the permit holder is in compliance with the conditions and all other applicable statutes, rules and ordinances.
Those are the conditions. Would someone like to recommend approval?
And then the edition for.
Oh, yeah, we got a greater condition also. Yep.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah.
Cabin shall be for private use only.
Simple enough. Does that tell the story?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to pass this permit for with the three conditions.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been made and seconded to recommend approval of this mission. All those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? We'll go before the final part of the ninth.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you.
In between meetings, we just everybody a chance of the minutes from last meeting, right?
Yep.
So is there a motion to approve the mention in the last one's meeting? Someone second? Alls in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Um, I bet Stan wasn't here, so.
Okay. This was May meeting, it was last month. I mean, Jim, Jim and Greg. So we ready to move on to the next hearing?
Yeah.
This is for rezoning from egg protection district to highway business district. And you want to read the staff notes?
Notice public hearing, please say notice, there's the following, and you're doing both that I should read. Possible following, two applications have been made on Joe Craig, side twenty-three and Rice Drive. So an application to rezone section eight point two subdivision two, an area from agricultural protection district to highway business district and an application for a conditional use permit to operate an agricultural oriented business in a highway business district in Caledonia Township on the following premises to it. Section twelve, township one oh two, range six, Houston County, Minnesota. Said app, good standing and making applications are as the owner of said described lands. A hearing on these applications will be held in the Houston County Commissioners Room, City of Caledonia, Minnesota, five forty PM on Thursday, July twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. All persons having interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to submit comments relative to the granting or denying of said application. Comments should be seen that should be should be mailed to the environmental services department. Three oh four South Marshall Street, Caledonia, Minnesota, or email to martin dot Eric at CO dot Houston dot MM dot US. It must be received by Tuesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Comments in regard to the petition received by this date will be part of the public record and will will be made available for review by the planning commission prior to the meeting. Houston County.
Well, if the applicants want to come forward and kind of present the plan.
My name is Tim Murphy. I'm an attorney here in Caledonia and I represent. I'll just just approve the title owners. Next to me is Justin. He's he's an employee with with healthy, healthy. First of all, we want to express we want to be good neighbors that make a substantial investment here. And no one's here to create problems for for anyone else. We would. First of all, we requested, which I've done in writing, we requested the record from the earlier hearings with regard to a conditional use application in an agricultural district be incorporated into the made part of the record as well as filings and records of the hearing. There's only one really change from the earlier application. Other be and as far as the facility. And that is that the building will be a hundred and twenty-five feet by two hundred feet, which is smaller than what was originally requested. Our our original request for the CUP was an agricultural district. And we had petitioned what we we properly at an egg district by the nature of of the of the use of the property and serving the agricultural community. And thinking that this might be a better way to go and avoid any issues in the future as to agricultural use. We request an extension of time for consideration on our earlier request. And that remains standing yet. And for consideration. A extension of time has been granted on that. So we're really doing this pending. Leaving that standing pending what happens with these requests we have here. The twofold twofold here to see one is to have the property rezone to highway business district. And we're going to still need a condition use permit. So there's going to be restrictions on property use. So. With regard to the rezoning of the property, already a portion of it is we find is highway highway business district. But it was a a TV repair shop by. It it in the past. It was highway business district, but six tenths of an acre of this property. We're dealing with six acres. Within a half a mile of this property, it's property that is highway business district. That that occurred back in July twenty seventh, nineteen ninety-nine, twenty twenty-three years ago. There's another parcel that's about a half mile away. That's has a condition use permit for a nursery business for a nursery. Property of Bloods Highway forty-four and Angus Drive in highway business district would be on highway. So I think that it's it's appropriate to be considered for that purpose. Also, the comprehensive plan encourages business to be developed within a reasonable proximity to to the city, such as Caledonia, LeCressent. And it meets within that criteria and also the comprehensive plan calls for economic, encourage economic development. That's. So that's that's the our first request. I don't know if you want me to discuss, but is that not the condition of use or just leave that one?
Just stay zoned first.
Let's do the zoning first and then revisit that condition of use for that.
So, and I said, as I said before, the 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 use of the property after it's zoned will be what was contemplated in our our earlier request of which would be on the condition of use. That's what we're here for.
I guess the other thing is we're just an advisory body, so we we can't tell you tonight if that's going to pass the actual body decides.
Right.
So. I guess we all understand that. So we first should consider the rezoning and then we'll. Move on, so in that regard.
I don't know if you have any questions, Buster.
Yeah. Anybody have questions?
Uh, Mike, one question would be, why are you requesting six acres? Why do you need so much?
Well, because of the the facility and the area around it for. Parking and and the areas around it to service the facility.
That's my thought would be on zone, what the building and the surrounding parking area. That would be my thought is what would be rezoned.
If you're going to put a fence around it, you're going to do a lecture. Put a chain like fence around it, you're going to need a little bit more.
Yeah, there's there's there under the condition of use permit, there's a number of things we're going to be dealing with having an area for erosion control. Got to have worms and things like that. There there's going to be fencing, I anticipate going to be required. And so, you know, it isn't like you just drop a building.
Right.
And there to.
I understand that, it's just that, you know, six acres seems like a large area and I'm my concern is, you know, we got one building, what in what in the future, if you got. An area of six acres zoned. Highway Business District, what's going to prevent you from adding on another building or, you know, further development? That's my concern. I guess I'm not, you know, familiar with the topography of the lot, the lot you're looking at. I understand, you know, to the south, it's going to. You know, it does go downhill considerably, but you know, that's that's my concern, you know, giving you six acres, you know, there's possibility for more development.
It's it's intended for that facility and the servicing area.
Right.
Around it, you know, pretty use that up pretty quick.
Okay. The screening that I think was on the original one, uh, buffers of trees, that would be included in your six acres, right? So I could see that ticking up. A lot of times the buffers would be trees that grow quick. Uh, maybe plus you'll have other trees that will to be the screening as you know, they mature, then the the quick growing ones might die, so it'll take a fair amount of time in itself.
And we we have to follow the F C, they have to follow the F C A requirements and. Worm and now there's going to be different things for water.
I've got a question, what what does the highway business designation or zoning? Give you the agriculture, doesn't doesn't, what is, what was the, what's the key pieces?
Well, the the thing that was happening before, there was the all of the back and forth about whether that was agricultural or not. And and we're we're under the once it becomes a highway. Highway Business District, we still have to get a condition useful for the use. And that that highway business district is broader than what you would have for. Mister Eric, without me. It's is broader as far as what things are permitted under.
What specifically in that additional capacity are they looking for?
One of the things too, you don't forget is this is a reason. In addition to the C U P. So there's the reason, so we had the general category.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm just wondering what what prompted that?
Well, what prompted it is is we were. There was much, much argument debate about whether fit in agricultural as as a conditional. For a condition use under the definitions under agriculture and they. When you look at the conditional uses, it talks about agricultural oriented businesses, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be like. It's probably it's stripped under the agricultural definition, agriculture. It also says idle service stations, idle sales. It talks about other uses that, then it goes on and says other uses. As termed by the planning commission, the Houston County Board of Commissioners are similar to those uses listed above and are found to be compatible with other uses ranked permitted in the district. So. If it's it's a. Brighter depth, brighter definition as far as to we we would would. May be any issues on whether it's about agriculture. We still stand by what we said before and believe that it meets the earlier criteria we're prepared to concede with that argument we have. But we're we're doing this to. Show that hey, we'll go this route if that's just what it takes.
Any other questions from the planning commission?
Nothing really has changed about the um, the use of this from the last conditional use hearing that grabbed. The only thing that would change here is it'd be a highway business.
Because it was already point six one acres, that's already zoned back.
Yeah.
This point, maybe we'd ask for comments from the public, now are we going to ask for comments from the public twice or just once? Because we got two things going on here, I think just once. So just, so then at this point, if it's okay with you guys, we'd probably ask for comments from the public.
But also realize that. There'll be one part and there'll be a second part. So once in the context of these zones.
As far as the comments that are in the packet, do we have to go through each one of those letters or do we? Or do we just ask for the comments now?
They'll be on record during the documents.
Well, let's let's go through, let's ask anybody from the public that wants to speak to come forward and do so at this time.
I guess this. The comments now will be focused on rezoning resorts.
Yeah, Mike Jerkerson, Caledonia. Guess the one comment I'm thinking about is this is supposedly a zoned highway district. This because of this TV repair shop that was there thirty years ago, is that grandfathered forever? Was there even respect in?
I don't think that that's why it's being rezoned.
Well, that was brought up that this was, this was part of a zoning district that it wants a TV repair shop, so it qualifies as.
No, I think. I think this is just a straight rezon, I think it's coming.
I just under the understanding that that should have no part in this, and that the old TV repair shop, I lived there twenty five years and it's never been.
Yeah, this this is, I think, a separate issue, I think that was just probably just conversational almost.
Okay. We also have a petition there that's signed by. We got this with all our eyes. A lot of work done. Using that man. Acquirement from scattered and mixed. Zone. Want to the problem of the south of Alaskan. And Mr. Collins, he's he's problems that come to spots only changing with mixed use and having residents and businesses all tied together as a source. The wireless speed zones are. We're safe. The plunk for it, I I think Houston County Board actually came to that conclusion to build a county shop. Where it belongs in. And city waters who were. It's not for the expansion. According to Bob Scanlon's letter, he said that soil types. One oh three B two C alone. Six percent slow are being soils that are zoned is currently trying to protect. That is exactly what this land gives that they want to change. And also according to that letter, we also have the water run. Keeps a ten year flood, probably not a hundred years, like in the same last ten years, we far exceeded that one. Greater than a ten year. We can't rain up Kevin and has. Weather can. US and to work stream, more and more people are looking safer, better. Looking for what's the worst in the Midwest. California, sorry, in fact, the real estate in the booth, they get a lot of California. Cousin that moves from California, wanting to have a little bit. Or maybe both jobs, compact space, I think, small businesses, small people coming to the area, staying in the area. Look at downtown Caledonia, see. People are rebuilding buildings, they're rebuilding. And are people are not. I can say. I'm a head of the south, but I'm one of those people, I can hear some of the new players who is. Business here, you know. Us this, this is, no, but. Okay. Zones of this all on the highway, we need to get zone. Go to the rest where we have spot zone. Once you start passing this, it won't hurt your time stamp. You know, it's all on what they was passed, changed in that in, but that was a business there before zone was net. So if we start changing. Where everybody can, if I pass the minutes, it will rob everybody to come back to this, which is my place of Stella. It will not. So it comes to town, so that is true. That is where it can be stayed. They keep adding on. Next, you know, you know, did it, we went through this last night, this uh. Weighting this, the openness, the use of that road of Angus Drive. So. Who's going to help maintain that, if though that would have to be the responsible for, who's going to be responsible? Then you take. By time we do zone spot zone, who's going to be responsible for the roads? You know, I'm going to us as the whole time, it's not holding up. Who be zoned and spots will be. Who's going to be responsible for all the road? It's it's a goal that we have here to go. We have a lot of questions. And we also believe this will be very interesting to all of our agents. In our entire community. Question we have, and that I was going to address, some that things would be the same as the previous application. But. Outside storage, well, it's younger than what it is. This application is as vague as the first application was. Questions that are not answered. They're not found, it's 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 a vital can of worms if I go into. Highway business, like they said, there's less regulation to it, it's it's less over sector, it's it's more of a free problem. Not free for all the role. It's new towns again, because the next person is going to want to. So we believe this is a commercial business that has room in the city through a statement. We believe this is complex with everything. Zone that that is on each place. It's it's bad passage. The other point is. Gardens, southern gardens are. The next point, there was a lot of families, that is, that is why I am. So people down these lot places. So looking at their part. Here's really based on the town shop we did in town. Back to the water, it's most funding. Back in the school here. Houston County. A lot of people realize what we have. And just to sum up, you know, just don't feel that. It's vital to feel, should we feel that, it's very vague, it's very uncommitted, it becomes more uncommitted to it. Lots of. This it's regulation out of it.
And you guys have questions for the? Zeners? Zenters?
Like we had one more thing, when you come from Caladonia. Towards, towards Hoka. Up over that hill at Joe's place, and I actually went there tonight because I was curious about. You're doing between sixty and sixty-five miles an hour, before you get to Angus Drive, that's about a five second delay right there. So you got somebody's turn in there, and that's, that's a bad spot already, it, it's not built for slow traffic moving in and out there. You're gonna have some accidents here in future, I'll give you that. Because right now, when I go home, I'm on high alert because these cars are zipping by right length, you get a semi turn in there. And you know, with the higher speed limit at sixty, sixty-five miles an hour, like I say, I timed it, it was five seconds from the top of the hill when you could see clearly. Through the road where you turn off on Angus Drive, and if this is proposed, the driveways would be up further, I assume. So that would actually shorten that up more, so that's a big safety concern.
That is a busy road, I've been coming to this meeting, ask Austin about this, they uh. Pass there, coming into this town on his bucket truck, they have, there's black marks on the road right now. From cars that get too close. That's just.
I think would intensify the traffic out there. State of town. Traffic. The speed limit is from forty-five miles an hour from the beginning of town, all the way to the other side, it's controlled. So turning lanes. Vehicles for their business could make a turn off. All equipped up there already. They need a sign to get to their place, they have a sign, this road, this road is our highway accessible already. Controlled environment. Forty-five miles an hour all the way through. Well, that slows everything down and. They're halfway there already. Or they are there.
Back to that, who's involved, my business survives that. Since I asked, do you have a business or a solid? Did not, I think it's a very good reason, I've done that very easy for this. But not a business person too, because saving our, you know, we're fired, fired, saving our area. Off, because there's too much. Brings people out of work, so we're up short before this. Say very little, this is. Safe.
You think that semis turning into that business. Will be more dangerous than a combine on the highway going that way, or a grain truck? Or a cattle truck, or a tractor with a planter, or a nurse spreader?
That's correct, that's going on now, but this would intensify all that.
So I can turn, and I'll just go there, determine several useful markets and there's a direct. There's a fair amount of accidents on the highway. I will not walk.
Still rural America, you know, they.
That's, that was my point, it's still the rural America.
That's right, America. But this would.
You come from the, from the hope that way, to make a right turn in, there's no turn lanes there, I drive a semi for a living. You have to go into the other lane in order to make the turn, the incoming traffic lane. In order to even make the turn, because otherwise your, your tannins are gonna drop right in the ditch. So that's, that isn't built for turning off either. When you make a right turn on Davis Drive there.
But if you tell your marks right on that corner. The grass line.
There is now, you're saying.
Well, the access road could be made a little wider at that point, I mean, it could be resolved, you know, to get in there easier probably too, wouldn't it?
I imagine probably. It's expensive township, right?
Probably, that's probably, is that state highway?
That's the. Plus the traffic would have intensified, no doubt. We're talking about combines and things like that, everybody's got an aisle for the farmer.
For everybody.
Somebody pulled out there?
No, just in traffic. There was actually. You know, there's a lot of traffic. Stop for trying to make left turn from the panel.
I guess it's unfair to ask too, like how many times a day would a semi be going in there? I mean, if they're working on semis, they're not gonna be just going in and going out, but repeatedly, it's gonna be, things will be going in, staying there.
When you say five, can you drive today?
That's on the truck, and you've got parts worries, uh. Other stuff's coming out, you know.
Right.
So it'll intens, intensify to it also.
But, yeah, I mean, you got the, just off the road, he's, he's Zenki's lot, I mean, that's, that's, it's a straight shot, I mean, it's, it's clear by his place, you can see.
Hey, you can see well there.
I mean, that's, that's a straight line.
And, and, and going in from pounds, it's gotta be very. The other direction. Cars in my, in my homes, cars are on the shoulder of a passing passenger.
Well, well, I think that. I think we're spending a lot of time on this, we have to make the decision on the merits or the benefit of the, of the actual thing. Highway safety is Minnesota's issue. Yeah, that's, that's up to them to, I mean. That's a piece of the puzzle, but we're spending a lot of time on that piece versus the benefit of, or the downside of the actual process. Everybody. Yeah, yeah, it's good to be aware of it.
Referring back to that sale of barn, and it's there. That just, that kind of thinking, yeah, it's there, it's been there. The home shop was there. And they ended up expanding or building right there where they were, everybody's at. Right where they're at, the county shop did it. That's on that same line of thinking. Sure, the. Silver barns there always has been. That's grandfather did.
Take that multiplier of two, that ten nights. Hoka. Ten more times, Hoka. Pressing.
I think part of the reason for a business district, it's pretty close to Caladonia, I mean, that we gotta admit, and that it makes more sense to have it. Close to, close to the city, and not, not stretched all the way along the highways, I think that, that's pertinent.
Yeah.
Well, each one is an individual thing.
You get a flower shop down the road, forty-four, same thing. They do a lot of business.
Oh, shops kind of on.
But you were talking about the traffic, that's the same situation. Is it right on Highway forty-four, and it's probably a little turn lanes there either. And that wasn't, that's probably been there.
It's not a big truck.
Well, if our, well, this proposed property is in the middle of three residents, does that make a difference? I mean, these guys have lived there how long? That's right, snack in the middle of it, so I mean, residential, right?
Next.
Further questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, discussion.
Is that it, or any other comments?
Any other comments? Comments on rezoning?
My name is Randy Mill, I'm a Caladonia resident, and I'm not. I'm not close to where this proposed development is, it's happening and everything, I've been in conservation for. Time, moved at Caladonia in nineteen seventy-five, as being our forester and worshipper for thirty-four years, and then. I worked for the University of Wisconsin Extension as, a try, I have a, as a extension forester on the western side of Wisconsin. So uh, my background is different than what the three panelists are hearing tonight. Mine is more, I'm more worried about the, the groundwater contamination that may continue to happen, especially even with. Ponding or diversion dams, that's everything, you still have infiltration of, of some of these things. Right now, presently, Caladonia's having trouble with drinkable water. And because of other. Nitrates and other. Ambient chemicals that are being found in the water, this has a potential of, of, of further contamin, uh, contamination, I understand MCA will help. Remediate most of this and everything, but we're, we're talking right now, if it's a hundred, I'm just, ballpark, a hundred by two hundred. Buildings, like that's almost four, four tenths of acre. That, that, right off the bat, is not gonna infiltrate any kind of water at all, it's gonna rush off. And then you have the parking lot, everything that too, that would be completely suggested, so it's gonna take quite a large area of, to hold that water. Down and flow into the, into the pasture land, that's more into the farmland and or pasture. Downstream, plus, just because you're, just because you have these ponds. Doesn't mean that you don't get infiltration that flowed into that pond down in groundwater, there's always even, there's always still seepage that goes down into the. Probably talking to this from fourteen to seventeen feet soil. Everything, so it's gonna be hard to seal something. I'm, I'm worried about, you know. Breakwater oils, diesel fuel, antifreeze, and transmission fluid, that could, it could potentially come in there, and the other problem with, with groundwater problems. On the cursed area, sometimes you really don't see a problem. Until forty, fifty years down the road. So I just wanted to let you know that there's a, there is a risk, and I understand that the owners will be trying to mitigate that as much as possible. But if we have a large, large storm, and they lose that pond, it goes downstream, whatever's in that water is gonna go down in that stream eventually, so. So, so I am talking about that part, but there's, my calculations, within a, a one mile radius of the full site, there are seventeen private wells, rural wells. Then there's a subdivision, approximately thirty-three of the land, of, of landmarks, that's there too, so there's a potential, potential of. Fifty will wells that, that, that could potentially be contaminated, but I guess, I don't know where the, where the groundwater flows in that general area. I would imagine it flows to the, to the, to the west and then flows down to the south. We don't have a hydrologic, a, a hydrologic format. We don't have, we don't have a hydrologic map as to how the groundwater flows in this potential state. And so what I would, would ask you to do is to investigate that, to see if there's, is it flowing towards Caladonia as well? Going down to first, first, right, right, is it flowing to the, to the north? The other, the other comment that I'd like to make there too is that. That was, I think, stressed before, that Houston County is, when they first started the rezoning, I was around when that happened, and the. The whole authorization at that point in time, the focal point was to try to keep farmland, especially terrible farmland as farmland. And there was exceptions that were made on that based on. Residents, and as, as other people are lying to the property, another building going up, they have to have some acreage to, to, with that particular building. To, to build out that country, and I think that's really served us well here, because everybody feels pretty comfortable with the open spaces, and nobody's pressing against each other. Real hard, and I would hope that you consider that too, and that this is, this, this particular business district. Ag protection district, okay, and you gotta read the words, ag protection district, into a highway, into a highway district, kind of a business district, and everything. Would be damaging to the. To see, and you can see why the people in the academy, and they feel threatened by this, and so they're, they're coming here for that. One, other concern too, there's that, as, as things change, yes, it is. Turning it into a highway business district, if it's resoned that way. There would have to be some major conditions put on it for it to be safe development. And, and county may not have the ability to enforce the conditions that are gonna be needed because of that result. So I'm worried about that part of people, and stuff, I've seen a lot of other stuff that's going on, that's been going on and everything, where rezoning has happened. And county hasn't followed up and actually got a lot of reinforcement.
Thank you. Another comments? On the rezoning?
Make sure that everybody's had, had the same.
I think so.
I, I would like to. I guess I'd like to review, if maybe you could, you could do that, Martin. My, my recollection is, this, this was a. Heavy. A heavy equipment and truck repair business. They did some salvaging, people were concerned that they had. Salvage trucks and salvage equipment out there, the point was, they said, if we got a big enough building, we won't have that. I, I don't know that everybody's on the same page, it seems to me that's a, a necessary. Or at least desirable business for our area, I think we're more into where it should be or not. I mean, we, we talked a lot about the highway, but I, I, I would like to have a review of where's, where's the permit at right now? We, we did that, and, and is, is, did that go to the, uh, board, yeah, just to review.
Initially, they came in and said the key, or conditional use permit. Ag protection district, and it was agricultural orientated business, and so. The premise was, they were in town, they wanted to move out to a different location, they proposed to keep it indoors. That everything would be indoors, managing the solvents, all these type of activities would stay there, and then through the various discourse. The size of the building was reduced, and we started to get more information, and then it went to. Then it went to planning commission. And it was approved. And then it went to the county board and it basically was tabled that it didn't, it didn't go through.
But they didn't reject it either.
They didn't reject it either. And then in the process, what also transpired is that then they requested extensions over time. So that stretched that out. So with the extensions that are currently available, it's about September first, right around there is when the existing extension will expire and it will be up to the board. County board to agree to it, because if they don't agree to it, it's approved. In other words, if they don't hear it, I shouldn't say, I shouldn't say agree. So in other words, they have to, the county board has to thumbs up or thumbs down on that second one unless something transpires with this. But it means the kind of situation that they don't act on. And that would be approved. So it's critical that that's also considered as well. So now with this, as a result of some of the discussions that went on, one of the things that came up is the ag protection district. Joe Walsh's attorney brought up a lot of information about what's the definition of an ag oriented business? And there was a lot of, a lot of review that was done on that. Our understanding, and I certainly could be wrong, very likely, but Minnesota didn't really have a ruling. They looked at Iowa. And Iowa's ruling was pretty tight. Iowa's ruling was basically it better almost be food. That was their definition of an ag oriented business. And so it was, it was kind of a case of this Tim alluded to, that by going with the highway business district in new one, then all of a sudden there is a different rule. In other words, you're into zoning as opposed to just exclusively a conditional use permit. That makes it a little more general, maybe not completely. And then you still have a conditional use permit for something under that as well. So, so you've got these, these kinds of sequences going on. So as a result of them coming in for that, that's where they're, they're looking for a broader definition of how it works. Then also the other factors that obviously play in is what previous activities have or have not occurred. And all the various specifics that go along with it, whether it was a sales barn, whether it was a TV shop or all these kinds of things play into the locations. So you've got that plan. So there's, there's a fair amount of things ruling here. It's kind of a is this, is this viable or isn't it? And it still, still comes down to this question of that activity that far out of town.
And in my sense of it is that this is a valuable and needed service. I, I don't know that there's disagreement on that. My sense is that everybody agrees, but we're looking, we're, we're trying to decide the best place to have it. It, it, it seems like, you know, we talked about the highway, but there are ways to resolve that. This gentleman talked about the pollution. You could build a case to say that's, that's going to be an issue no matter where it is. Probably better handled in the city, but you know, it's going to be wherever they are, that's going to be an issue.
And there are
And they have to deal with it.
There, there are various types of structures and things that can be incorporated, investment and practices.
So I think we're, we're kind of down to where is the best place to have this? I don't know, I probably shouldn't use analogies to get in trouble with it. But I, I remember one time there was a somebody wanted to have a pig operation right next to town. That didn't make sense, especially if you're going to, if it's going to be successful, you're going to want to expand it. You're going to want to make a figure. So you need to look at that. If this is successful, as they're saying it's going to be, I think it needs to be not in a, in a residential area where they have have constantly trying to justify them being there. There, you know, if, if they're in a residential area, there's going to be conflict constantly. And that's going to be not good for the business they're trying to run. And, and like I said, I, I think it comes down to my sense is, and maybe we've got other people can, can address that. This is a valuable process, a valuable service they're providing. But probably not like the hog farm right next to town. Maybe that's a bad analogy, but the, the thing we're trying to decide here is where is the best place for this?
Part of that, what they're talking about is a highway issue. And turning lanes have absolutely nothing to do with these guys. And so if the highway isn't adequate, it's not, in my opinion, it's unfair to say you guys can't go there because the highway, there might be an accident there. I, you know, in the, in the fall and spring, that, this is ag district, but I would be more worried about planters and combines and, and grain trucks. And I would be about a semi making a left turn or a right turn. And if they're all, if semis are already driving on the public, which sounds like there's evidence of then the highway should be repaired, be repaired before these guys are denied access to their property.
Got something to say, Tim?
There, there was, there was much discussion. There's no options.
But the neighbors say there is. The neighbors say there is.
Where?
I don't know, that's what they're saying. So that's, what are we supposed to believe?
Joel?
Yeah, I got it. I've got coffee, so that corresponds absolutely. Which is not in the, not in our response, but I don't know what's in the present situation. I've been more foreign. Commercial, commercial bill. Was in fact in with letters. And if you this property is located in total services. And if you are going to build on that, save limits, you're going to have, you're going to have to rent service.
This is up there recycling out there is what I understand here. It's pretty close to Houston County recycling. Okay. That's, that's prime ag land, isn't it?
Yeah, that's the same ag land you're talking.
Maybe you guys both want to come up, Joel and Tim, would that be okay with you guys? Tim, you mentioned the moratorium on on what?
I understand that the city passed the moratorium.
Oh, I'm sorry. The moratorium, I'm just asking. One of the questions, it was related to the grain elevator.
In that, in that district with that property there. There's, and I, I'd have to Mr. Hellkeeps or, or one of the representatives of age of the Hellke group speak on behalf of what's available up there by, by them on their property. You know, they, they're going to keep Joe Root truck going. That's going to stay up there. So to, to where they can do this, there was a lot of discussion about that before presentation.
Want to you guys want to come forward too? Just stay there, stay there.
So we're trucking staying where it's at. HR Enterprises is a separate business, totally different. Owned by me and Joel. Trucking, me, Joel, Dylan, Justin own HR Enterprises.
I mean, one thing, the land is owned by Hellke.
And, and, and Ruth.
Yes.
That, that being said, out on Angus, that land's rolling. Where we're at, it's just straight up and down. But everyone says we can build there. But they're worried about flatter land, about that land, just and as far as I'm concerned, six acres for thirteen acres, that's an insult, so. Straight up. It'd be like, I'll give you forty acres for four hundred. Are you going to give me four hundred acres for forty?
Well, there must be some, I mean, there must be someplace in Houston County that would be easier to get, that it to easier would be not in a residential area, that would be easier to get rezoned. I don't know, I mean, maybe I'm, well, obviously I don't know that. But this particular piece is right along the highway, which is, which is nice for a business. But, but if you want to expand that at some day, you don't have any room there. Maybe that's what the six acres is for, I don't know. But for some reason, this is in a, well, the, the reason is it's in a residential area that people are objecting to. There is, I, I drove down, what was it Angus Road today? And there's a lot of open area there, not ideal for, for firing possibly. But that's from a very naive air, uh, look. And and I, I, I struggle to not think that if it was someplace, like I said, if you have in a hog farm, your way out here, you're a lot more likely to get that okay. Than if you're right next to the city border. And that's the same thing, you're right next to the highway. It's an ideal piece of, piece of property. And that people are protective of that. So like I said, I, my sense is everybody agrees that this is a necessary service. It's a valuable one, one that could grow. But not there. And that's just my opinion. I'm, I don't have any, any, what do they say, a horse in this race at all. I would just, I, I'd like to see that going, but I think it's a valuable, valuable service. But we're beating ourselves up. I mean, people are getting upset and I don't know. Somebody else can address that. And are there any spots in Houston County within the ten mile radius or twenty mile radius? I, I don't know what would be your
That's the problem, you can't buy land. Calabany out to where they are, you can't buy land, they sell. Or into families, or in estates.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I got neighbors. They spread manure.
The, the other point that's worth saying, that's really not a residential area. There are three people living like very close around it, but it's, it's still a rural area.
It's ag protection.
And, and, you know, at one of the meetings, somebody said, well, you're welcome to come out and build a house. That's not really what this is for. That's not, that's not a subdivision out there that, that's still ag land that can be used for more than, than homes. You know, that's, we're saying that too. Any other thoughts? You were going to say something?
Can I come forward just a second?
Sure.
You said you drove down Angus Drive. My name is Richard Ray and I live on Angus Drive. That's cattle country, that's agriculture too.
Sure, yeah, it is.
I mean, that's cattle, that's the way we make our living. And one other thing Randy brought up, the water that runs down there goes down to that big dam down by Alan Ashes down there. And there is a sinkhole that does not hold water. That big dam will, a big drain will fill up. All goes way through that sinkhole. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
These guys have a erosion control plan. I mean, that's even the Hollis has one. So I don't think that's necessarily an issue. But I think it's unfair to say, okay, um, yeah, this is a necessary business. And it would be helpful for everybody. But that land that you own, well, we don't want you to use that. We want you to look somewhere else and see, see if you can possibly find some land somewhere else that everybody around there is going to be happy to see you come in. I doubt that's ever going to happen in my lifetime. And I just think that we, sooner or later, we got to bite the bullet here. And say, get, you know, prove this or not, because you can't cable it forever. Or otherwise, what's going to happen is it will pass by default. Doesn't, and, and nobody, anybody here, pro or con, will have any say in it. It will pass. And the conditions will be, who knows? We actually have an opportunity put conditions on this, which we did last time. If I remember right, quite a few of them, down to a percentage of the business that had to be agriculture. There were quite a few things that we put, put on there. So we're never going to make everybody happy either way. And sooner or later, we're going to have to do something.
Hey Martin, I got a question. If a farmer, if a neighboring farmer would have bought this property and wanted to build a twenty-five thousand square foot building strictly for his farming operation, it'd be a done deal already?
But I'm pretty sure, yeah.
So it's more the yeah, I guess, it's hard to say what it is.
No, that's, that's, I mean, there's, this has got to have a conditional use. So that, that's where the discretion should be.
That's where we got to
Because if he agrees that it, it needs to be, you know, they need, this is, this creates jobs, opportunity. You know, we're telling him about jobs. And so, so it's really the discretion should be is if they're You know, we're telling him about jobs, and so, so it's really the discretion should be is, if they're concerned, concerns about different issues, that's the condition.
That's what our conditions are meant to deal with, any, any problem, problems with, with runoff, problems with.
None of us want water. That is a problem.
And we had those conditions in there.
At that last meeting though, all these conditions came up. They're allowed to all of that.
That. That's, that's a completely separate issue. This is not, we're, um, we don't enforce. The only thing that we do is we recommend, um. To the county boards, we don't, just because this, this, um, planning and zoning recommends that something pass with certain conditions. That doesn't mean that it will happen that way. The county can, can throw the whole thing out if they want, and start from scratch, the county can put their own conditions out. The county board can, we just, uh, we just recommend.
Well, to that point though, um, most of the zoning enforcement is through complaints driven. And it seems like there's gonna be a fair amount of observation, and, and if there was something going on, they, they kind of will, they follow up on things that are brought to their attention.
That's lots of specific things that I was told.
No, it depends on what you're talking about, doesn't it? I mean, if you're, if you're talking about, uh. When he burns that, when he, you know, doing different things like that, that's, that's what I can watch. I think what you're talking about, well, is that an egg truck out there or not? That's, you gotta be, what are we talking, that's the issue.
I mean.
You know, it's like.
One of the things that's, it's not impossible. Is, is construction documentation, construction follow-up. It was built this way, whether it was a main garden, whether it was some sort of structure, whether it was an energy dissipator, these type of things. The construction part. Is possible. Where it gets tough, I'm not gonna kid here, is, as in, like, checking to see, like, say tax records, to see if this was. If it was an agricultural business or something like that, that stuff gets very nuancey, and, because that, that's, that's dependent on reporting, that's dependent on this, there's all kinds of things going on. Whereas like, in terms of. Did you build it this way? Does this match the boot prints? Does this match the specs and stuff like that? I mean, we could go to the point of saying a PE, so shine off, sign off on the as builds, if this was built exactly to the, to the specs.
And, and the questions we came down to is the second part, is meeting, I guess, you know, this stuff, the agricultural part, is that the agricultural side of it? That's what, uh, those questions were, that was on.
I, I understand the concern that, I was the first guy up for a hearing tonight, and, and I asked for a conditional use permit to run a welding shop out in where I live. And nobody, nobody objected, you know, nobody came, but I mean, that's a business, I'm smaller, you know, but, but we gotta promote businesses too, I mean, this can't just be just soybeans and corn and machine. If, if there's other stuff that can be done here, and they're, they're serving egg, I mean, the county is for everybody, it's kind of, it's not, it's not just an egg county.
And so, what brings families here, so. Small businesses that are profitable, so.
Can I ask, it's just kind of technical, is this like a, um, up or down, yes, we're gonna rezone, or no?
Well, okay, the. The, the conditional use permit. The only way you can get to that is by a yes on the reason.
We could put the conditions in the conditional use permit.
No, no, okay.
Yeah.
If, if you don't, yes, on the rezone, there is no condition.
So if we don't say yes on the rezone, then the original conditional use permit that, that we approved is what goes forward.
And the board needs to come for, needs to make a, make a decision.
Fight and comment, fight back comments, one of, one of the reasons that we did this is just what Mr. Eric was talking about earlier, there was this quagmire about enforcing. This, this, about this day, we're gonna wanna be. Fighting that battle forever with people, and somebody second guessing and having all kinds of complaints and problems like that, so we come then and thought, this would be a cleaner deal.
Yes.
And, and that's, that's. It, it, you know, these guys aren't afraid of doing it right. You know, if, you know, it's groundwater, it's whatever, they're not afraid of doing it right. And, you know, they, they, that you're in the area, they're not from ours. Well, this, this is, and, and, and I appreciate where Joe is coming from, he's done a nice job of, of presenting his, his case. And other people here, you know, they, I mean, they, they got it right, and being good citizens by coming forward. But, you know, we're lucky we're here, not Ukraine, we gotta, we got people here to sit, decide and make decisions, and, and nobody's gonna blow us up, but, uh. We just wanted to work right.
Well, if I remember from the last go around of this, they agreed to alter their billing to accommodate it.
Yes.
So, I mean, the, and, I don't even know why I asked this, but it, it, if this. If we review this request for rezoning, does that start the clock again, or is it same clock?
Well, these are two, two clocks, I mean, one clock is running on the previous application, and then one.
But if.
Runs on this.
Yeah.
Okay, if you wanna, another is table this one, is that what you're saying?
I'm, I'm not advocating that, I'm just, that's information that needs to be available.
We're, we're within our, our sixty day window on that, but.
We approved the free rezone, that doesn't go to the board?
Well, that would go to the board too.
It comes to the board.
Yeah, but that would start the clock again.
Yeah.
Not, not saying I'm, I'm advocating that.
But there is a current.
Well, that one we don't care for, if.
You don't care, yeah, that's not, you're passing, yes, that was passed on the board.
But that, that becomes void.
I would like to. Tim's point is, like, I hope we use that as high as only, it's, it's less oversight, it's, it's less restricted, and that is why, since they want to do it, it's less of a quagmire, it's just, if there's more options, we'll, we'll recite.
I didn't, uh, it's a great interpretation, Joe, but it's not what I said. Anyway, I, what I'm saying is, is we don't wanna be squabbling over, there's farm trucks there, or what's, you know, what, so. We're not afraid of, of, we want. No problem oversight on fundamental things like water, you know, they, the restrictions that are, you know, how this thing is put up, it's, it's for screening. So Joe doesn't have to look at something he doesn't wanna look at, because it has to be screened or on there. I mean, those are things that should be done, enforced, and, and practiced. If it's not practiced, okay, if we end up. Going with the first one, with all the arguments and the discourse over that, and then people start complaining to Mr. Eric. Well, they're, they're not, they're not, that's not enough egg to beat the order, beat orders, and then we, then we've got, then, then we don't wanna be.
Yeah, I sat and counted the trucks. Right, that you end up, that almost, is, uh, zoning to hire a CPA to go through their books to say, okay, I don't think this one counts. I mean, we, the enforcement of this could be so expensive, it, it would just be ridiculous, at the very time, people want county, um. Budgets to go down. This is a simpler, to put this on the highway is simpler than, um, to say, okay, every six months, somebody's gonna go through their books and check. Was there a Toyota pickup in there, or that wasn't a tractor, or it's, it's kind of intrusive too.
It's, it's confusing, isn't it? And that's, that's the first here. That's the question, what, what's, and, and Joe addressed it pretty well about the timeline, what, what's really going on now is that we, we have made this application. To have it resold. And, and. We wanna get that passed, and we wanna get the conditional use permit request passed, which are recommendations to the board. And then this will all go to the board before. They have to decide on the egg one, and then.
Yeah.
Then they, then they got a menu.
Yeah.
Okay? And then they, then they got a menu, and they wanna work from one to the other, or come up with, with, uh, build some, you know, whatever the other thing might be, but. But right now, they have one thing on their ticket. And, and, and we don't, and, and the concern is, for our community, they don't wanna be arguing with, they don't wanna be arguing with the neighbors forever, about, wow, was that. Egg trucked or not, whatever, you know, what is the definition? And, and Minnesota law is not very clear. So you, you could be in litigation, and that's, that's. You know, who only asked for this, or that's, we are moving, the waters, so we, we try and get clean in that.
We, we got one comment back here.
Other state plans, because you can't make that comment on the road, while you're driving off either side, they need to be submitted, that should be submitted before this even comes to court.
Well, we, we did get the ruling from.
But again, a ruling.
No, 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 no.
Design your building, what you wanna do.
Right, no. I'm following what you're saying. What we have.
And monitor.
As a recent information.
Still needs to be monitored, we deal with a lot of big companies. So you put a CUP, you can't just do, build your building, say we're good for six months, they're under strict, six months is one year investigations.
Sure, I mean, what, what we've done.
All this proof.
What we've done, done today is we got a ruling from DOT, and it's part of the record, to say that they don't want access on forty-four, they want it on Angus Drive. That's what we have, so.
I've seen complaints, see that's even easy.
Making a highway business. Less restrictive, it's less rules, it's, it's less enforcement, we don't want, we want to, we are right to the essentially.
I'm just a little puzzled by this whole thing, you know, just speaking candidly here, that, I mean, I've lived in this area all my life, and, and when I built a freestyle barn, I mean, that thing is sixty-two by a hundred and seventy-six, and all this got a lot of water running off, and there are a lot bigger ones in the area too. I mean, we're walk, we're talking about water runoff and stuff, and, and your dad's place out there, there are a lot bigger barns, I mean, this stuff just occurs, I mean, and, and nobody has much oversight, we're, we're, we're planning to put an oversight into this, so it has to be monitored, watched, you know.
It's still like, that, you wanna build, I want to build, that was made to stay here, that's where that building belongs. This industry, that building belongs out there. Forced to use the coal and shaft, stay over there, so why aren't we forcing these guys to stay up there? And force them, did you look in the options? I mean, my brothers, that is only up here, smart line, he's not ready to talk to. So, I mean, I don't know all the backs, but I, I don't wanna.
Could you state your name, please?
Dana Lee.
First name?
Dana.
Dana, alright, thank you.
Craig, you want, it's been brought up a number of times. Why don't you guys build up there? Why don't you guys try to build up there? Just for, yeah, for everybody.
There's no room to put a facility like. So, it's, it's straight up and down.
And there's no room to even keep the.
It would be.
Stuff they wanna work on inside.
Tremendously worse, I mean, it would be. It's steep.
If you have city sewer water, you need, can't use that well up here, you can't use that stuff, so you're adding all that cost.
You're saying you don't have room to build it, what you wanna build, I'll hear you do.
See, this was already part of six one acres.
How do we know there won't be more objections there?
No.
Well, we're just, we're chasing our tails, aren't we?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, are we just chasing our tails this way?
I don't know. And that's what we sold, it started actually.
Like it was brought up earlier, right, like, we can't blame these guys for land that they already own, wanting to do something on it, that they've purchased, and expect them to go, hey, go try to buy everyone else's land in the county to do something, right? It's not really realistic for them to put that on them.
It's like saying. Yeah. You could use that garage, you'd need a garage, but you'd have to put it over there. And like, you know, you'd have to go find land to buy that's different from it, I mean, these guys have this land. The highway's good access, the question is, basically is. Should we say yes to this business?
I'm sorry, but when you say that, you're kind of contradicting yourself, because he has the land up there, he's finding any way to get out of his own land up there.
He doesn't own all that, when you look, have you been out there, obviously? So they have equipment that's outside, that they wanna use. But they can't, they don't have room to get everything in and out.
But there's more land. More land.
Steep.
You have more ground, you're just a steep, your equipment's in the building, those lock and round, doing a dance, you're putting a building up, you're gonna be putting your equipment, all your oils, all your fuels are gonna be in that building, it's no different.
That's.
I think if you hook on Beacon, that spot that they have, correct me if I'm wrong here, there's not a lot of land outside the building you already have to build another twenty-five thousand square foot building. That's, that's what you're getting, and you, and Snowpack's probably not gonna sell you the open land. Next to it.
Did you question that? It's true. It's too steep. Those were, you know, the same, all of those were in either place.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I know, I'm in construction, I know, I do this every day.
We should get to, we should get this back to the committee.
Let's get a line, let's do the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're gonna just have to make a decision here, the question before us now is, if we wanna rezone this to highway business district. That's all part, but that's still the question we're trying to resolve right now, that's what we're, we're after.
Right.
Let's do, let's do the rezoning now. And findings, let's do the, the findings.
Yep.
Okay.
Great.
Findings are basically section eight point six of the Houston County zoning ordinance requires that the building's findings have supported a decision. But does not describe specific criteria. Final findings are proposed by staff through consideration. Please consider the one additional boundary to see if it underwalled. Sixty nine, use zone change to a hundred twenty foot by two twenty foot area from A one agricultural protection to B one highway service business. This is essentially an expansion of existing highway business district. I also. The two. It's all about evaluation.
Yeah.
The next next one is property eleven forty nineteen forty four is some highway business district. Further from the city of Calhoun, it's a parcel considered using. One more is the comprehensive land use policy zero one zero zero point zero five oh six subdivision two policy one provides that developers should be able to. Near cities where certain services can provide the location of approximately one mile to the city of California. One business aspect. Service district since the new zone in nineteen. Basically, the the findings that we have are the way it's supposed to be. Yeah, I guess.
A little more discussion might be in order.
Yeah. Like one of the things said on, it'd be ideal to not put it there, right? But I think about a great example. Right now they're building sewer plant behind my house. I would rather a twenty acre field, right? Instead of a sewer plant. So I know exactly what everyone's talking about. At a certain point, you can't go find land elsewhere to do it. Everyone thinks it's an easy thing to do, but if you've ever tried it. Nobody wants to sell in the first place. And then when they do, it's, you know. An amount that's crazy. It's extremely hard to find land to do anything in Caledonia.
I guess I'd come back to the same thought that it is close to Caledonia and. Being a business district that close to Caledonia makes some sense because it's. Population centers close, close by and. It doesn't seem like it's gonna be. An issue where that every precedent following this is gonna have to follow this because everyone comes up individually and can be looked at at that time. To me, it just makes sense to have it where it is. New discussion?
I I think it's a right business. And I think that us. I don't think you're ever gonna find the perfect location for this where everybody's could be happy. I truly think this is best.
The question is, the question right now is, is it okay to put a business district rezon? In this spot? So that's the question we're answering. That's the only question we're answering right now. Right, but that, but that in the end, that's what we're trying to do.
It is giving.
Yeah. So I think it's just. We put our names down and forward adjusted. So we'll do a roll call vote. I think that's, that's all we can do.
We can do that. Greg Myrie.
Yes.
Rich Sheen.
Yes.
Yes.
Ed Hamel.
Yes.
Josh Grant.
Yes.
Jim Wees.
Yes.
There you have.
Yes.
Do we need to? Uh, do any more on this? And that's pretty much the function of this part of the.
Well, and then there was also recommendation for.
Instead of going on the CUP.
But the conditions not the CUP now.
No, no, that's a separate hearing.
It is.
Yeah.
But that's.
Well, that's what you're saying. A motion for a recommendation?
The application we will call again specifically for. The, you know.
Rezone.
Because my understanding was the first thing I was doing was for the fine.
Okay, correct.
So now I'm doing. Based on that, recommendations is that the understanding is that any permit conditions we will put into. Submission of use permit. So if it's approved, if it's not. So so in terms of the, what I'm asking right now is the roll call is. To agree with that. Propose to resolve.
Make a motion to accept the findings.
We did that.
We did, we did. Okay.
So I will, so starting again, Greg Myrie.
Yes.
Rich Sheen.
Yes.
Yes.
Ed Hamel.
Yes. Yes.
There you have it.
Yes.
Josh Grant.
Yes.
Yeah, a second on that. Sorry, we need a second on the motion. The approval of switching. I heard Larry got first.
If I wasn't done, I'll I'll make a second.
Thanks. Larry made a most direct.
All second.
Based on that. We'll show up in a second. This is the. Roll call for the granting of the E zoning. And made the next district to the highway business district for the really helping person. So then I'll go through the last time.
So, yes.
Using sheen.
Yes.
Yes.
Ed Hamel.
Yes.
Jimmies.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
So it's a public hearing. Please take notice that the following two applications have been made by Joe Root and Craig Kelpie by twenty three enterprise drive. So. Application to these all section eight two subdivision to an area from agriculture protection district that I wanted. And the application for a condition we use permit to operate an agricultural orientated business in a highway business district section sixteen. We include subdivision one subsection one, Caledonia Township on the following premises to. Section twelve township one oh two range six Houston County, Minnesota. Said applicant standing and making applications are as the owner of said described lands. Hearing on these applications will be held at the Houston County Commissioners Room, City of Caledonia, Minnesota at five forty P M on Thursday, July twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. Half persons having an interest in the matter will be given an opportunity to submit comments relative to the granting or denying of said application. Comments should be mailed to the Environmental Services Department through O four South March Street, Caledonia, Minnesota, or emailed to martin@erica.co.houston.mn.us. It must be received by Tuesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty two. Comments in regard to the petition received by this date will be part of the public record. And will be made available for review by the planning commission prior to the meeting, Houston planning.
Well, I guess we probably ask for the applicant's comments again.
As I've mentioned before, this is Tim Murphy for the record. As as we mentioned before, we'd asked that the prior. Hearing to the filings in the area of CUP be made part of the record. And the only change of what was in the area of CUP was to downsize the building. Otherwise, it would be basically the same information. And we believe that this is appropriate under that. Or that's the use of the property is primarily served a community, which is. We did condition use uh, fall winter conditions, highway business district. Heard a lot about that last month and. We understand that there's been conditions. Concerns here. We want to address those concerns as far as. CA is screening any of those things. We understand that. Facility will be a modern safe facility far as environmental issues. Have to address those. So. Late, so I don't have anything more unless. That's something to be or.
One question I had, changing the scope of square footage, how's that affect like the business operations actually inside the building?
So initial, we were. Facility. What we were looking for was like. Everyone had concerns about the height and size, magnitude. Trying to work with the neighbors. Went back, looked at how hard track. We had the most, we wanna stop. Not looking at, we don't need that large facility. We don't need it that large plus downsides it. And owners. Home, we came up with that. By the last four years.
The original scope had larger growth projections, essentially best case scenario, and this is probably more where you're.
Worst case scenario, we should have this thing, but realistically. Why heat? That size. Size.
Changes the height of the building.
And change the height of the building because they were, everyone was concerned that the height of the block, who's stuff changed it.
I guess the other question would be, do you ever foresee expanding and doing anything? More? I mean, this, this is probably gonna, this is a pretty good sized facility. So the roof area wouldn't, wouldn't increase over time. Questions? Well, if you have any further questions, we we can ask them then too. Members of the public that wanna speak can come forward now.
Industrial parks. That's where parks would. Business is business, right? They are. They're there to make money. Successful business is good. Buy land. They, they can expand. That city gives them a little government. I'm not gonna put up with it anymore. I'm gonna buy a little trumptal side town. Set up shop, gotta give it to them. So I think so. Doors.
Will each applications looked at individually?
But. Now that can worms is open. To get it out there, it's industrial practice will empty. Sort of speed, you know. But, you know, the town is a place of commerce. The landscape open. Got the view. Place to drive, they took billboards on for that reason. Anyways, we peppered with billboard. They took them down because nobody could see the countryside. Well, you know. It's important to some, not to everybody. But for for the most part. Um, I think our towns and the countryside has been suffered.
I guess in response to that, my main thought on this being an okay place for a business district is the proximity town. If you look at towns, I mean, they're, they're, subdivisions are calling in the countryside further and further all the time. That to me is no matter and it's hard to address all those issues, but this.
Towns are growing that way.
Well, this is going also, I guess, the V, I would say.
Well, now, now you gotta, you're gonna have the same rights meant to have in the middle of three dwellings already. Plan it right there. Thank you very much.
What if, I guess, the counter, and I don't disagree with you, but the counter is, what if a farmer bought it and he did that exact same thing?
Well, there was a little hobby farm there. It's eighteen acres, you know?
I'm saying if a farmer bought it and said, I'm putting up a forty thousand square foot full shed. Right next to dwellings and runs a farm operation there.
Well, it would be zone, uh, highway business would be zone A.
Right, I'm saying no, he could do it, right? And it, the building, it all looked the same, feel the same.
Well, there was, there is a pool bar there. There was a hobby park.
Yeah.
It's a hobby park. There's a pool bar in there already or a. A tin over it. Orange fruit, what was. And the data was a current.
The biggest difference would be. Buy shops. Yes, your moms, so the farms.
Right, the scope of the building is the same, right?
This building, if by lastly, his neighbors would still have to get a letter for him to put out that show.
I think what we're saying is largely they wouldn't, right? To build, you know, agriculture district. Yeah. Yeah.
But the biggest questions we have is step into part two. Basically, like part one was done for. Basically, like, part one is done for the century, so. Part two is, you know, with this business, are, we don't. And this application is extremely vague. There are no facts in this to say is what your business plan is. Will, will all activities be kept indoors? Probably be equipped, sitting outside, will sound trucks be brought in, will parts be brought in? You know, what, what brought in that you may need to take parts off, because we're gonna have something else, you know? We don't have any answers. That makes this without more, more research on it, more questions answered and probably about proper commitment. We just don't know. You know, when we're not a body shop, there's a lot of cars in there, it's just a good body shop. Or is it we, we're just working on mechanics, attractors, some trucks. Going back to. What, what is the use of the bill, the exact use of the bill? This is a real difference. They want to off the scope of. That's where the debate was in this, the two weeks last time.
Didn't our conditions answer most of those questions last time?
Yeah, we can use the same conditions and answer, you know, for all of them.
Oh, right.
They will be.
They will, yeah.
Right, a lot, many of those concerns will be addressed by the conditions.
We put the conditions on it before we do the findings, or we do the findings and then put the condition.
Discussion.
I'm from Spurbo, but I live in Caledonia Township. And I believe I heard someone say, there was a petition with sixty nine signatures. I think you should listen to some of the other people.
Any other comments?
Just a question. Just to clarify myself or my thinking here, was there going to be like? Vehicles, other vehicles brought in from the outside to tear apart the parts and all that? Yes, I'm asking. Was there going to be vehicles brought in from the outside? What I had heard, like, we're getting vehicles from insurance companies and stuff like that to be brought in to salvage or. Take parts off. Are you gonna do that out here? They be up there, or would they be able to? Then my question. Finding board, that's considered salvage, right?
Is it indoors, is that, is that what?
Well, if the building's either indoors, outdoors, salvaging itself.
Salvaging has its own licensing act, isn't it?
Look, I guess what I'm saying, a business district. I think your honest, basically says, salvaging junkyard salvaging is prohibited.
The main operation of your business isn't salvaging, the operation of your business is to service customers. You can't get parts. You need to do that. I think that's the, I can defend him on that, I, I work for a big trucking company too. We do whatever we can to find parts right now, because it's just, they're not in the market. Extremely hard to find a lot of things.
But everything will be inside the building?
That was one of the conditions that was put out in the original C U P, everything.
Here in God, you're selling the parts. That's a salvage. You're not selling ass parts. I'm just saying salvage would be salvage, whether it's inside the building or outside. That's what I'm saying, I guess I was looking at earlier. There wasn't a whole lot of information, that's why I just.
Well, we're gonna put a lot of conditions on here, soon as we get done with the findings. The conditions on some of these hours, there's no equipment outside, everything's gotta be inside the building.
Can you approve something that is prohibited in this district? By conditions?
What can you call it, salvage yard, just because you're buying parts for a truck up here?
If you're bringing a vehicle in and salvage it or put the parts off.
But they don't always bring vehicles, maybe they get a fender or a morder from the cities and maybe just bring it down, put it in the shed. They put it in the truck.
Well, that's, yeah.
Well, and, and that same thought pattern then, Rick. Would you say that a farmer who? Has two junk combines for parts, is it allowed to have those? Cause he's salvaging parts? Would you, I mean, isn't that what you're just?
A farmer having combines in them, that's all permitted uses.
They could salvage, but these guys can't.
What I'm saying is, by the ordinance, the way it's set up. Salvage is, is not permitted, or junkyard, you know, business district. You guys are satisfied with that, that's, I mean, that's, that's your, your call. I'm just bringing the, my thought.
Just a question, is there gonna be room for any salvaging up in the facility you have now, if you had to tear them apart there, I don't know what to. That'd be another way, because that's industrial up there, correct? That maybe be a way to do that.
I know when we discussed their original. You, you had at that point sold stuff outside of agriculture. Would that, would that still be part of your process? Pardon me? I remember we had the discussion specifically about advertising that you had them parked.
Any further comments?
So does that not have it in there?
Just saying one thing, my name is Richard, very big guy. You're talking about everything is gonna be inside. They own the property all the way along, and two trucks sat out there all the way along, right on the high. I know they own the property, but when they make a statement, nothing will be outside, why weren't they put away there, they wanna be that big? Why, then you can't put them up there then?
Any further comments?
I mean, can, can, can we look more than five, during six months, sure.
Generally, that's your system that you want to put on inside our yearly inspection stores. I suppose you guys could do that, or something in like one year, five years?
My, my others are water, when these ponds are built, like I was saying. I just dug ponds the last couple days, and we are constantly monitored. For oils, chemicals, what's spilled. It doesn't hang, who's gonna filter that, that'll be checked monthly, six months.
Any further comments?
Yeah.
What do we do about that, it's not in, that's not an allowed. Activity in a highway, what was it, highway business? It's not an allowed function.
Did you find that in there, Jim?
No, because it's not there, how do you prove that?
What are you saying, there's a separate salvage yard?
It's section twenty, so.
Yeah.
That's separate. What does it say there then?
There's sixteen three conditional uses, seven other uses.
But we, but we authorized a highway business district, and that's not one of the things you can do in it.
Yeah, you're right.
It's still, it's still down with the definition of what percentage or something has to occur.
If you've got stuff, if you've got parts on the shelf in the, in the building, and you brought. Equipment in there, and you dismantled it and put them on there, so when you needed them, you got it. To me, that's salvaging.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then, then your interpretation is any salvagey is. It's no, no salvagey, let's go. I'm not trying to get out of it.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, I mean, yeah, it's what happens once or twice a year.
But new parts, fine. When you have a whole shelf, stop, use that salvage.
Well, it depends on how you got it, if you brought the equipment in and you tore it down and put it on the shelf, that's salvaging. If you bought used parts and put them on the shelf, that's not.
Big difference, the paperwork, I mean, we improve it, and then we can plug that.
So if they're doing the salvaging within the building, no one ever saw it, what would be the issue?
I'm just saying. If, if it's salvaging, if, if it's not salvaging, it would have a lot taken, say, from, you know, Illinois.
Yep, I guess outside of the scope of whether it's salvaging or not.
Sorry, what?
What's the, so if it, it's in their building, no one ever sees it, what's the issue?
Well, no, nobody sees it, then nobody knows, so there is no issue.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah. Right, so what are we debating, right, because they're saying not, we're gonna, we're gonna put. Yeah, but their, their business itself isn't salvaging, right, you guys agree with that? Their business isn't salvaging. You do one thing, one time to service customers, I think that's being a good business owner, not being a salvage yard.
Correct.
And that's gonna be in the conditions like we're talking about, right, that's not gonna be allowed.
To me, did your, is your, your business model changing now? Because what you were doing is salvage. Building, what are builders?
We were buying ractrons.
But you, but you had parts on the shelf from. You had parts on the shelf from trucks that you brought in. But you had, you had parts on the shelf from trucks you brought in there. That was salvage, if you're gonna do that, we got a problem.
Well, to be realistic, the, the reason there's no salvage yards allowed in. The business district is because every salvage yard I've been in, you know, alters or anywhere you go, it's junk cars pass from one end to the other. That's what a salvage yard is, that's why that's in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, this isn't salvage yard.
It still comes down to, one of the issues is the release of the fire. If you're indoors, it's, it's contained, you're able to collect the oil, the refrigerants are, are all, all the, all the things that go along with it. If you're capturing those, I mean, I think that's, that's one of the motivations that went behind. The development of the rule as it relates to salvage yards was that, and there's certainly the requirements of eyesore. Certainly the requirements of you drive down the road, if you see it, it's a distraction. There are, there is a junkyard program at the state of Minnesota, that talks about the number of cars and fencing and various things that you have to do. So those are a factor as well, but those are all in the context of outdoors. It may not make that distinction, you might be right.
Right, if that, so if that became the dying issue here, so we can move on from this. You're still gonna have the facility up in the industrial park where you can do that anyway, bring the parts over to this one. So it's really nothing to argue about at this point. Yeah.
So this is not taking the place of the one you have already. This building, this new facility, I see, okay. All right, now I feel that.
So they can still do the salvage here, and just bring the parts they get out there if needed.
Yeah, well, if you do, if you do, do it, don't do it here.
So then, so that means that we can move on, correct?
Yes, yeah.
And that, that can be a condition also.
Yeah. Yeah, that's reaffirming what's already there, but yes.
I think we maybe all know where everything's going here, so.
One question, oh, if they repair these trucks or whatever, are they gonna have trucks to find up all their crap for sale?
No.
There not gonna be anything out front for sale?
You guys wanna answer that?
Well, they, we can answer that, we'll put that in the, in the, the.
Conditions.
Our understanding of the application was everything's indoors.
Right, I'm just asking.
Well, should we go to the findings effect?
Yes. I need commission may determine that more information is necessary to address all things like that. Section 1105 of Houston County zoning ordinance requires the following subdivision and finding. She shall not recommend. Proposed use conforms to the county land use permit, staff analysis. When the requirements are met, a conditional use permit provides a mechanism for establishing agricultural highway business district that conforms to Houston County's land.
Well, those that agree with, uh, staff analysis number one, say aye.
Aye.
Number two, that the applicant demonstrates a need for the proposed use, staff analysis. The applicant proposes to repair agricultural equipment, including repair machinery, semi trucks and trailers used for agricultural purposes, which is a legitimate need.
Well, those that agree with the staff analysis number two, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number three, that the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county. Staff analysis with adequate water, with adequate surface water control and properly constructed and operated SSTs for managing septic. The water quality will not be compromised.
Well, those that agree with the staff analysis number three, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff. Staff analysis, the proposed type percentage of permeable surfaces and structures will require adequate surface water management, including construction, operation, possible treatment, energy dissipation and infiltration to reduce surface water runoff.
Does that agree with the staff analysis number four, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number five, soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the. Staff analysis, the soil bearing capacity is adequate to the soil structure. The soils can be compacted and created for the proposed roadways. Additional surface water management features can be incorporated to enhance the site's infiltration capability.
Well, those that agree with the staff analysis number five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number six, the potential pollution hazards have been addressed and that standards have been met. Staff analysis, while an erosion control plan in Houston County zoning ordinance section 24 is required, the primary pollution from sediment loading will be addressed in the MPCA permitting requirements because greater than one acre is being disturbed. The facility is proposing that all activities will be performed indoors, including management of solvents, degreasers, fuels and lubricants. Additionally, new construction materials and methods have substantially improved energy efficiencies and waste minimization.
Well, those that agree with the staff analysis number six, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number seven, the adequate utilities, access roads, drainage and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Staff analysis, the proximity to existing structures in the city of Calabonia likely lends itself to accessing gas, electric and other utilities. Adequate frontage exists with gentle slopes allowing access to Angus Drive.
Well, was that agree with the staff analysis number seven, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number eight, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use. Staff analysis, there is adequate space for off-street parking and vehicles loaded.
Well, those that agree with the staff analysis number eight, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number nine, that facilities are provided to eliminate any traffic congestion or traffic hazard which may result from the proposed use. Staff analysis, substantially larger site distances, transition zones, upgraded subbase and other features are needed for truck traffic. Traffic from the proposed facility will have to egress from Angus Drive. 30422 email from Minnesota DOT to Amelia Miners noted that access from Highway 44 will likely not be granted based on a proposed number of vehicles transitioning from. And traffic hazards.
Well, those that agree with the staff analysis number nine, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number 10, that the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of, of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Staff analysis, while the proposed hours of operations activities typical of a commercial site, surrounding areas in agricultural protection district and commercial activities of similar nature, screening vegetation, exterior lighting and other activities can be implemented to substantially reduce the view shed of the building to the local residences.
Well, those that agree with the staff analysis of number 10, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number 11, that the establishment of a conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. Staff analysis, the proposed use for the parcel needs to be kept at Houston County's land.
Well, those that agree with the staff analysis of number 11, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number 12, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent and control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise and vibrations so that none of these will constitute a nuisance and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result. Staff analysis, the applicant proposes to form all work indoors and the roadways will be maintained to prevent fugitive dust. The lighting will be directed down and the signage will be minimal. As noted in the staff analysis, staff analysis providing number 10, screening and vegetation blocking the view shed towards the residence will substantially reduce the disturbance to neighbors.
Well, those that agree with the staff analysis number 12, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number 13. All right, I'll read it. That the dense. Oh yeah, you didn't motion it to, to the way yourself was reading.
Right.
That the density of any proposed residential development is not greater than the density of surrounding neighborhood or not greater than the density indicated by the applicable zoning district. Staff analysis is not.
Well, those that agree with this, staff analysis on number 13, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
14, that the intensity of any proposed commercial or industrial development is not greater than the intensity of the surrounding uses or not greater than the intensity characteristic of the applicable zoning district, staff analysis. The intensity of the proposed commercial activity in a highway protection district isn't substantially different when consideration is given to the lives of buildings being constructed for agricultural purposes. The proposed traffic and daily activities are not substantially more than seasonal farm activities.
Well, those that agree with the staff analysis number 14, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number 15, the site specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of public health, safety morals and general welfare. Staff analysis, with the SSTs, the site erosion plan, the applicable MPCA requirements, conditions for screening and other possible conditions listed below, the proposal will be protected with human health and impact.
Well, those that agree with the staff analysis number 15, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Make a recommendation, we accept the findings as presented. I was second there.
Well, those that agree with that, say aye? Okay, that's.
Except the, the findings, Greg Myrie, Rich Shield.
Yes.
Wayne Bellmeyer.
Yes.
Ted Hammond.
Yes.
Jim Meeser.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
You want to read the conditions? And then we have to kind of work on a few of my things.
Right. Those conditions to the rude healthy conditional use permit in a highway business district. The permit shall comply with all federal, state and local laws and regulations including the following Houston County zoning ordinance. Houston County zoning ordinance section 2913 subdivision one, where any business or industrial use structured parking or storage is adjacent to property zone for residential use, that business or industry shall provide screening along the boundary of the residential property. Screening shall also be provided where a business parking lot where industry is across the street from a residential zone, but not on the side of business industry considered to be the front. Houston County zoning ordinance 30.4 subdivision seven, in general business and highway business districts and in limited and general business districts, parking areas and access drives shall be covered with a dust-free, all-weather surface with proper surface drainage as required by the county engineer. The operator of the principal building where you shall maintain parking and loading areas, access drives and yard areas well-kept. Houston County zoning ordinance section 30.4 subdivision eight, lighting shall be reflected away from the public right-of-way and nearby or adjacent resident districts. The next good condition should be really two says, the permit shall comply with all. Number two, no person may store or keep any vehicle of the type requiring a license to operate on the public highway but without a current license that suggests you to whether the vehicle be dismantled or not outside of an enclosed building. Number three, the county man, manor onto the premises at reasonable times and in a reasonable manner to ensure that the permit holder is complying with the conditions and all other statutes, rules and ordinances. Number four, demolition and raising of existing structures shall be performed in accordance with all MPCA solid waste requirements with disposable, disposal of non-recyclable materials, including any contaminated soils at the La Crosse County landfill. Number five, as part of the building permits middle, the following design information shall be submitted to the Houston County zoning office. Exterior elevations drawn to scale and plan and profile, details on the exterior cladding, roofing, materials, foundation specifications, exterior signage and personal lighting, details on exterior building mountain structures such as air contact units, water conveyances, awnings, walkways, driveways, aprons, followings, etc. Traffic management plan includes routes, vehicle types, transition zones, the primary roadways. Number six, within 120 days of this approval, the following document shall be submitted to the Houston County zoning department for approval. A site screening plan addressing neighbors' view shed of the proposed, of the proposed structure, the use of fences, earth and berms and vegetation. The screenings submitted shall include plan and profile views of the structure and the neighbors' associated view shed, view sheds of it accounting for elevation differences. B, a surface water management plan with proposed site contouring methods for managing runoff, managing roof runoff, dissipating energy and promoting infiltration. And C, an erosion control plan in accordance with the Houston County zoning ordinance section 25C, soil erosion and sedimentation control, which then we also have that. So these, these would be the ones that would go from what comes from the rezone. The conditions there, it would be that the rezone area shall contain only one business. I think that's it, but I might have forgot some.
Looking this number to address the, no, not parking vehicles for sale.
Right, we can do that.
There's a question back there.
Well, if there's any provision to keep it. Is the one that we come up with before, still sufficient for you guys?
That's why I thought we went to highway business.
I, I think, oh, I think the reference to A or finding. The language doesn't say it's.
We had a percentage.
Well, not, yeah, not only that, but. Egg related.
Other stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're using it for that reason.
So I don't think we put those in there. Otherwise, would we just do the last part for it?
That's part of the reason we sold.
Yeah.
Or they, we sold.
Or, or ended with us. Little service station, three aisle sales establishment. Four, driven theater, garden, nursery supplies, grain elevator, speed mixing supply. Seven, other uses, other uses as determined by the planning commission of Houston County order commissioners. That are separate to those uses listed above that found to be compatible to other uses already committed in addition. Doesn't say it's got to be. We're back to the earlier argument about, well, we're going to, it's got to be all A and it doesn't have to all A. It's A brand. But it doesn't mean it's.
Or you could change the name of your application. You could change the name.
Not really.
That's true.
You guys want to do cars anyway, do you? But you've always repaired trucks. And paid them, I guess that's part of the business, correct?
Well, with body shop, the time quits. All right, but we knew that they're going to be paying fine trucks, I mean.
With the reason, it changes the scope of it a little bit too. It is still, that's still your primary business, isn't it?
Yeah, I thought we got rid of that when we talked about. Thought we got rid of that when we talked about cotton and how many vehicles, whether they were agricultural or not.
Well, let's put a condition number seven in there for no vehicles for sale, maybe parked outside of the.
Yes, I have, I have a facility showing up to split vehicles for sale.
Okay.
I think most of the questions are answered as far as keeping things indoors. And, uh, you've got to monitor all the MPCAs that are monitored when they're building and stuff, so a lot of the questions are answered here. So I guess, at this point.
Billy, can you clarify something? I think with, I'm a little confused too, kind of what Joe's bringing up. On the request here, the conditional use. Is it a conditional use of an agriculture-oriented business specifically? Well then, did we just request to go back to what you guys didn't want before? Or am I not thinking that right? Does that change the scope or is what Joe's saying essentially, you just requested what you just? That's, that's what we were before, right?
So, you know, this, the fact that it's not said, does that mean you can't attack it?
In the new one, even it, even on the agriculture-oriented business, in the commercial, there's a lot more scope of what you can do still.
Condition uses go back all the way to section six, right? Goes back, it doesn't go back to three ninety-four and three ninety-four gives you the authority and generally additional use that can use under comprehensive land use plan, Rick, does that sound right?
Well, I think we are gonna have to decide. And I think we already proved the business district reason.
Okay.
So where we are, then, uh, I think there are enough conditions on here satisfy almost everything but the cotton vehicles are going and out. I think we can't really do that because this is a business district application, so it's a little bit different. So I guess, at this point. Did. You guys do that, yeah? And then after you do that, then we'll include these motions and then have somebody.
We did defining the facts, didn't we?
Larry, didn't you do that?
Yeah.
We done with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, so now we have to do the recognition.
We're to the conditions.
Okay, that's what we do. So with these conditions, one through six. Seven. Would somebody wanna make a motion to recommend approval to county board?
I would make a motion to recommend approval to county board with the conditions we've discussed, one through seven.
I'll second that.
Greg Myrie?
Yes.
Rich Shield?
Yes.
Yep. Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.